So we'll start. If you have the agenda, there's one change at the bottom of the pending cases. We have a request for adjournment from Ken Fox at 472 First Neck Lane. You have a motion on that?
I move we adjourn that case.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a whole bunch of decisions. Starting with 2779 Cowles Associates LLC, 477 Little Plains Road.
I move we accept this decision as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? 1280 on Meadow Lane LLC, 1280 Meadow Lane.
I move that we accept 1280 as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2794 Old Town LLC, Old Town Lane.
I move that we accept 2794 as written.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2797 Richard Verge Senior, 408 First Neck Lane.
I move we approve 2797 as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2800 Recam Holdings LLC, 51 Pond Lane.
I move that we accept and approve 2800 as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2804 Lake Forest Holdings LLC, 291 South Main Street.
I move that we approve 2804 as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That takes us down to the pending cases, the first one being 2797 Matthew Stotnick, 40 North Main Street. And you have a letter.
Yes.
I believe.
Yes, a letter was sent to you, I heard you say that. Anyway, Susan Wolcanski from Spaces Landscape Architecture for the applicant agent for the applicant. You know, he's with Stragglers. Yeah, sorry, I was, last meeting I actually missed. So I know that I submitted a letter and a plan stating that the existing right-of-way, the driveway that exists on Mr. Stotnick's property, as per the town, meets requirements. And I know that, I guess Matthew, the owner, sent you a letter saying that they had come agreement with the owners. Because apparently, you know, everything was, this is fine for the two owners that live behind this property, that he closes off his existing parking area and opens up a new curb cut for a new access onto his property. However, they were concerned that the existing driveway need be maintained for emergency vehicles. And, you know, the client, of course, is on his property, understands that that is, of course, a condition, that you would never want to, you know, he wants to care for that and make sure that there's access for emergency vehicles. So again, this is a property where the Stotnicks own the first lot of, and there's two behind them, that there's two other homes that use the same driveway. And he has a couple of very young children, and he wants to separate this common driveway, you know, and make it private, so that's more safe for his family. He wants to be able to use the front yard, because he does not have a very large yard space for the children to play. So besides that, that side of the driveway, the north side, where the driveway exists, is adjacent to a commercial building, where he wants to kind of also separate himself from the noise and activities from over there. So, and he wants to kind of enter his property on the same side, that there's a nice residence next to him enters.
He says here that he did meet with the fire marshal.
Yep.
And he was okay with it?
Yep, yes.
And he would take care of the hedges and things like that?
Yeah, it's, uh...
Enough clearance?
We have to do a little bit of clipping, and some plants have overgrown, but it does maintain the height of thirteen and a half feet. It does have clearance of twelve feet at the, where the mirrors of the, say, a fire truck are located. It does clear that. And then, basically, you need a minimum of ten feet of driveway for the wheels. And that's, that exists.
Do we have any questions? Things seem to be settled on this, so...
It's pretty simple.
Dan?
No?
Jerry?
No questions.
Anybody out, anyone who'd like to refer to this application?
We adjourn it for decision?
Fine. Have a motion?
I move that we adjourn it for decision.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's no way that decision could be made correctly?
I don't think so, he's gonna have to write it.
No?
No.
Okay.
I'm fighting off a cold right now, and I'm not gonna try to word something, but head cold.
That takes us to 2796 Jasper Rose LLC, 60 Halsey Street.
Anthony Trezor, on behalf of the applicant, I'm gonna give another copy of the survey to the board. Do you have one there?
Is this a new one, or?
No, it looks like you have it, yeah.
Last date on here is 10/21/13?
This one's a little more recent.
Well, then you better give me one.
I'll give you one. Let me recall from, not last meeting, the meeting before, I was before this board. This is a property on 60 Halsey Street. It's a through lot, that's frontage on Halsey Street and Fordham Avenue, or Fordham Road. If you recall, this property had a previous ZBA decision that granted a variance to allow the accessory structures to be located in a front yard, there were no dimensional variances requested. That was the case because of being a through lot, everything from Fordham all the way to the back of the house was considered a front yard. So anywhere that an accessory structure was located required that variance. And in fact, your previous decision called it a routine variance, given the characteristics of the lot. And at that time, the plan that you see before you is what was approved, except for the garage. What you're looking at is a new garage location. It was previously approved behind the house, and that's where we came to change, to modify the approval, to reflect the new location for the garage. It's important to point out, because we had a pretty good discussion last time, there were some concerns from the board. Couple of points I wanna really make here is, with respect to Fordham Road, we have access off of that road, and the previous plan that you approved accounts for access, because we have that second structure there. So there's really no debate about that. In terms of the variance itself, what we're requesting is exactly the same as we previously requested. That is to say, moving it anywhere in that property is going to require a variance to allow it in the front yard. And again, we're not asking for any dimensional relief. We meet the setback off of Fordham, and we meet the side yard setback. So in this case, we're not asking for any dimensional relief, it's simply to allow the structure to be located in a front yard, just like the previous decision reflected. Now, what we didn't really get into last time, and just wanna briefly go through it, is the criteria for granting a variance. And I'm gonna go out of order here, a little bit, because I know where the board stood last time on the issue. Whether or not this variance is substantial, again, we're not asking for any dimensional relief. This is the result of having a through lot, so anywhere you put the structure, or any accessory structure on this property, required that variance. So again, it's not substantial, it's precisely the same as it was previously. Whether or not this would have any adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, again, this is a developed neighborhood on both Halsey and Fordham. We're proposing an accessory structure. It's very nicely designed, it's consistent with the other physical characteristics of the neighborhood, in terms of the principal dwellings and typical accessory structures that you would find in a residential lot, i.e. a detached garage, a swimming pool, a shed, what have you. In terms of the environmental, this is a type-two action, it's not subject to any further environmental review, but it's not a wooded lot, there's no wetlands, so again, there's no issues as it relates to the environmental impacts. Whether the difficulty was self-created, again, it's a through lot, no matter what, as I stated, where we put the accessory structure, it's going to require the variance. So I think that's pretty well addressed. Whether or not we could seek this relief any other way, again, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but we can't. It's just the nature of the lot, having a through lot with two road frontages. Now whether or not there's an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, and this is sort of where the board was last time, if you look on Fordham Road, directly across the street from this property, there's a residential structure with a detached garage facing the street. A little bit to the north, there's another white house with a detached garage facing the street. And along the street, obviously, there's other residential structures. If you look at the design of this, I mean, this is a very beautifully designed site plan for a property. It has a nice residence, it has a swimming pool, in this case, detached garage, again, all typical residential structures, and a second structure that was a pre-existing structure on the property. So, again, the character of the community is defined as a residential community, with single-family residences and customary accessory structures. So, again, we're not proposing anything here that's out of character, what's already there. So, again, I just wanna point out that putting this garage in that location doesn't change any of the impacts that we didn't have before. So, but putting it where we had it previously, or putting it here, is really the same. It's still a residential structure on a residential lot within a residential neighborhood. So I find it difficult to believe that there would be any undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. On the property across the street, I don't know if I have any of the copies of the survey, the property directly across the street, front stomach Fordham, and it's also a through lot that goes all the way to Breeze Lane. Previously, this board had granted a variance to allow the swimming pool to be located in the front yard, again, because this is a through lot, and no matter where you put it, it really required the variance. At that time, the survey that was submitted showed a driveway off of Breezeway and a driveway off of Fordham Avenue. So we're not in new territory here by what we're proposing. This exists in the neighborhood already. So I, again, I think that our proposal could be approved by the board as we proposed, without any changes, for the reasons that I stated. Now, I have, and I don't know if Joe wants to say anything, I have Joe Salvi here, if the board has any questions for me or Joe. But, you know, last time, the board seemed to have a lot of concerns, and, you know, after really thinking about it and looking at the five criteria for the issuance of a variance, I don't see where this proposal should cause really any concern for this board. And if you have any other questions, again, I'd be happy to discuss them.
I think the concern was, why did he want it changed from up alongside the main house, back near the guest house?
Sure, sure. And I'm gonna have Joe's going to discuss that with the board.
Hi, Joe Salvi, 295 North Sea Road, Southampton. Good evening, everybody. I actually represent the contract vendor, so this is the end user, if you will, for this lot, the person that's gonna live there. And I've had extensive conversations with them about, with their purpose. And the thought was this, they're gonna use the house, they're gonna live in the house with their family and their children, and they would much prefer the garage to be located further down, closer to the pool, because it's gonna store the pool equipment and such, and closer to where the guest cottage is. And the plan is that cars would come in through Fordham, which they're gonna come in anyway. And there's a, remember, there's a cottage on the Fordham side...
They're gonna put the pool equipment in the garage?
Yeah, in the winter time.
So why does it say "proposed pool equipment" in the one-story frame building on the survey?
I don't know. I mean, you have to...
It depends on furniture.
Jeff, you have, James, you have to understand that we didn't put the initial application in, the builder did. So I'm not really sure what exactly their plans were when they submitted, but I can tell you what the plans are of the owner, which is why we're here and joining the application, is that...
When you said the equipment, did you mean the pool furniture, or you mean actual pool equipment?
No, I mean, the pool furniture and...
Pool furniture.
The equipment was supposed to go in the basement.
Right.
Right. I mean, obviously, this is gonna be a large lawn, they're gonna have all kinds of furniture and stuff.
Why do they need a garage so far away from the house?
Well, remember, the garage is not only gonna serve the house, but it's gonna serve the accessory cottage. Now, they have children, they're gonna be playing in the yard and around the pool area, they prefer it on that end, because I think that their car access is gonna come off of Fordham. That's what the plan is, I think that's what the plan always was. And remember, there's a dwelling there, so you have a dwelling on the Fordham side, and you have a dwelling, the main house, and the idea was to keep that in the rear portion of the house.
Well, if they're coming in to go to the main house, they're obviously gonna come into Halsey Street, they're gonna walk on the drive.
On the draw...
They have been doing it already.
Exactly right, exactly right. So there's obviously access to the back house, that's a question as well. And, you know, the other thing that I would submit to you is, you know, of course, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that there was some opposition, and that that opposition was really geared to the fact that the opposition didn't want access off of Fordham Road. But that's gonna happen, in any event, you know what I'm saying? It seemed to me, and I read your opinion carefully, it seemed to me that you made a couple of points in your decision. One, your concern was that the minimum front yard of the fifty feet be respected, which it is off of both Fordham and off of Halsey. The other thing that you said in your decision is, you said, "In a case of a through lot having two front yards, a variance to permit an accessory building in a front yard is generally considered to be a routine variance." And I know you've held that before. The case that Anthony was referring to was the Glavin case, and that was in 1999, where you granted similar relief. And so the point, I guess, I'm making is, it's more preferable to the owner, to my client, to have that garage, not impeding in the area where the children are gonna play. They foresee the children bike riding, and they foresee the children hopping in their bikes and riding on the Fordham Road and up, which is a less-used road, and a little bit more safer for the kids. That's what their plan is, that's what they wanna do.
They have a one-bedroom guest cottage, correct?
I'm not sure of the exact approval, because I haven't seen it, but there is a guest cottage, yeah.
Is that what that is, a one-bedroom guest cottage?
To be quite honest, off the top of my head, I don't remember what the specific building plans were for that, but...
I think that's what that was.
I mean, I certainly couldn't argue with that, Dan, I don't have the answer.
If you're gonna have a parking space there for a guest, they're gonna have one vehicle, maybe at the most, two. By putting the garage back in the corner, I see two vehicles in the garage, enough space on the parking lot for maybe another three or four vehicles. It's like you're jamming all, everything that the new owner don't like, back in the back corner.
No, I would disagree, Dan.
And the purpose was to limit the access of a Fordham Road. You know, the house is basically accessed from Halsey Street.
So I see a lot of impact of vehicles being shifted to Fordham Road...
Which was what we were trying to avoid.
Right.
Well, if you have a garage there...
You have four cars there in the garage.
Right.
Do you have what?
You have cars in the garage, you have access through the garage.
Yes, that way you wouldn't have cars parking in front of the cottage, you'd have cars in the garage.
No, but then you have the four or five cars now coming in and going out of Fordham Road.
What, four or five cars? I don't know which cars you're talking about.
You got two cars in the garage, two cars in the parking place...
You got two cars in the garage, you can put three cars right outside the garage.
I see five, a bunch of cars here.
If they could park five cars on Halsey, they could park five cars on Fordham.
And that was the point, with to have access through Halsey. It was to limit the access through Fordham Road.
If you don't have a garage, you don't have the big driveway, you don't have the big parking.
With all due respect, they can come in off of Fordham, drive circuitously around the property, and park into a garage. I mean, it's not gonna, I understand what you're saying, but you granted the same variance, saying it's a variance that's considered routine. I understand your objections, don't want access to Fordham, but that's gonna happen in any event.
We wouldn't easily grant that first variance, that was before, for a while.
Not at all, this was a tough case, right.
Okay. But that's your language, that's not my language. I mean, I read from your decision, that's what you said, I didn't say that, I'm reading your words. So what I'm saying is, how do you substantiate denying a variance that you're calling a routine variance, because we're moving the garage fifty feet toward one side of the lot versus the other, when it complies with every single dimensional regulation that's in the code? I think it would be tough to support that decision. I don't see any rational basis of denying the application, because you're concerned that they might park cars in the Fordham area or in the Halsey area. I mean, we don't know that to be the case.
The spirit was to have access through Halsey Street, and to limit the access through Fordham Road, and it was a tough application.
Okay. But they're gonna access off of Fordham Road, whether you grant this variance, or whether you deny this variance?
And maybe the garage will be closer to the house.
If the garage was where we...
What's the difference?
If the garage was where it was supposed to be before...
I don't understand the difference.
It'll come off of Halsey Street. And if you wanna have a driveway going up the side of the property?
They have one.
I know.
You believe that's a rational...
I do.
...reasonable rationale to deny a variance? That requires no dimensional relief?
Should've been here for the first one.
It just seems...
That wasn't involved in the first one.
It just seems strange. You have a large house on Halsey Street, why would you wanna park your cars back here? Obviously, they don't plan to park their own cars there.
Predominantly, the cars will probably be parked in the turnaround, because they'll obviously be using the turnaround like most seasonal people would use it, and they'd wanna have the garage in the back, because they're not gonna be using the garage on a daily basis.
If the garage was up alongside the house at the end of the driveway, did it have to have relief in order to be there? Did it meet the side yard?
No, I think it made, it made the side yard, I think it was fifteen-one.
Didn't meet the side yard.
Yeah, I think it was fifteen-one.
All right. So we're not swapping one variance for another variance?
No, no, there's no...
We're meeting a whole new variance.
It's the same variance, it's a variance for a garage and a required front yard. That's the same variance, you're not giving us dimensional...
Well, it's alongside the house, that's not the front yard.
What's that?
Where the garage was before, it's alongside the house, that's not the front yard.
Everywhere on the lot is the front yard.
Everything, that garage required the front yard variance, because it's a through lot, and the interpretation was that...
Yeah, but two hundred and eighty feet from Fordham Road.
Was that...
Two hundred and eighty feet from Fordham Road, or something like that, you know? It's a huge distance from Fordham Road.
But the only requirement setback is fifty from Fordham. The required setback is fifty from Fordham.
Yeah.
So whether they're at fifty, or sixty, or seventy, or eighty, or a hundred and eighty, they're still meeting the minimum setback that's required.
All right, so what we're saying here is that you want this variance because the owner wants it. That's what it comes down to, right?
Isn't that whatever variance is for? I mean, an owner comes in because they have a specific use, and you relax the standards in normal situations...
He got an okay for a garage up here.
Right.
And now we have a new owner, and he's changed his mind, and he wants the garage back here.
He wants the same variance.
He wants the garage to be relocated.
But there's no difference in your variance relief, it's the same variance.
I'm just saying, he wants the garage to be relocated, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, he wants the garage in a complying location, consistent with the variance that you already granted, yes.
I have to say, I agree with every argument that Mr. Salvi has made.
Thank you, Jerry.
Makes perfect sense to me. I have no idea where you guys are coming from on this.
Well, Jerry, I'm a client to agree with you, Jerry. I'm a client to agree with you.
Oh.
I mean, he's got access from Fordham Road anyway, so where he puts the garage, it's his property. He wants it back here, instead of up here?
I just, I think there's also, it's believed that somehow the intensity of the use is going to increase. Again, it's not, we're proposing the same structures, it's the same use, we're simply putting the garage towards Fordham. It doesn't eliminate the access, and I don't think that promotes, or will contribute to some great traffic increase on Fordham Road. I just don't see that...
The access is already there.
You know what I would also say, Kevin, just, and I think from a factual standpoint, they have three young children. They're predominantly summer people. In the summertime, they're gonna park in the front of the house on Halsey. From time to time, an in-law will come, and they'll use the guest house, and they'll put the car in the garage. Mostly in the winter, they wanna store all the outdoor furniture in the garage. I understand what you're saying, but there's not gonna be four and five cars, it's just not...
Almost all the houses on Halsey Street now are just there during the summer. You can take a walk during January with my dogs, and half the houses are dark.
Right, and this'll be no different.
Jim?
The only thing I was worried about is that you had such a go-around with the people on Fordham Road with the access to it. I get it, I really do, but, you know, it was, we went through a process to get to this point, and now you're changing it.
And I, you know, listen, this is my first time here, and, you know, and I know you've been through it, but I haven't, and I apologize for the late show, but we just went into contract on it a few months ago.
And we have a new owner.
If I could just address James real quick, the Architect Review Board said the same thing when I was before them, because we had to go in there to amend the plan. And the thing is, sure, you know, we went through a process, I wasn't involved in it directly, Kyle Collins had been representing the applicant at the time, and I worked for him. But like any project that comes before a board, sometimes things change. And, you know, a new property owner, or prospective buyer, or even the current property owner looks at things, and they think about construction, or they, you know, talk to their contractor, and sometimes a project will change.
I know, but a variance is a variance is a variance, it's not as of right.
Yes, of course not.
No, absolutely.
Of course not.
Now, is he gonna come back and have a garage up alongside the main house?
He will not see me again, I promise.
Well, not for something else.
That's what they said last time.
I didn't say it last time, they said it last time.
That'll be the next application.
I promise, I promise.
What was the variance, they said they're not gonna subdivide the property, because it's in half-acre zoning?
We are filing a covenant.
Yeah, you are getting a covenant.
The property will not be subdivided.
It's been approved, it's subject to some wording changes, I did the changes, I'm waiting, I should have it tomorrow from the owner to file.
You know, and like the other board members, I get it, you know, with the kids and everything there, it's just, it's just hard to take second swipes at these things.
I understand. Again, my apologies for coming in and...
Dan?
I don't have a right now.
Jerry?
No.
Rick?
No questions, I will just add one thing. It's not quite as simple as you make it sound. If you had proposed what you're proposing now on the original application, relocating the guest house close, much closer to Fordham Road than it was, and putting the garage, you know, near the guest house rather than near the house, would the board have granted that? We don't know. That's what they really should be thinking about. Otherwise, it's what we call piggybacking. You come in, you show the proposed relocated guest house near Fordham Road, and the proposed garage near the house, it makes it look like you're minimizing any impact to Fordham Road. It makes it look different, that application looked different than it might've looked had you come in all at once for what you're proposing now. That's something the board will have to decide.
Right, and it's a tiny road.
But it's not, it's not quite as simple as you make it sound.
But we do represent the applicant, in all fairness.
I understand that. Is there anyone, anyone who'd like to refer to this application? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
Hi, Lockwood, south of the property on Fordham Road. Regarding this application, you've heard it many a times, as has the ARB, and Mr. De... This is not, Mr. DeVine is out here, Mr. DePietres, this is not simple at all. I understand I can't speak for everyone on Fordham Road, but you have their letters on file. And you know that the people on Fordham Road are against having this garage placed there. We do not want a driveway there. We understand there is a parking pad. If you go back way to the beginning of this application process, we did not even want the guest house located where it's located. process, we did not even want the guest house located where it's located. But because that's been granted, we've accepted the building there. We've accepted the parking pad. We do not want to accept a garage there with a driveway. And like you said, you know, the applicant may say, "Look, we're going to just use it as a garage." You're basically looking at an accessory building to an accessory building. The accessory building, the garage, should be for the main house. The main house is located on Halsey Street.
In all fairness...
Yes.
You know, I understand where you're coming from.
Yes.
But the point is, is that it's half-acre zoning on a one-acre lot. They could have subdivided. You would have had a house there with a driveway.
Well, if they were to have subdivided, they would have to go before the planning board because they don't meet the square footage by...
What do you mean they don't meet the square footage? I thought the square footage was appropriate. It was just off.
But they would have to go and...
It was close.
But they would still have to go before the planning board, even if it were accepted.
Right, but that's a stretch to deny something like that.
But if that's the case, because precedents have been set in the village, then so be it, whatever the case may be. But the original applicant said, "No, we want to keep the dilapidated building that was on the property," you know, "that was quite abandoned at that time with holes in the roofs and whatever else." The board approved and kept the building, and it was approved in the location that it's in now. And that's what the original applicant said he wanted to do. He wanted to keep it as a guest house. The original decision...
We haven't changed that.
Correct.
It's still the same.
But Mr. Zuhuski mentioned that it could have been subdivided.
It could have two single and separate homes there.
Correct. But what they decided to do was keep the guest house, and in the trade-off was that they would not subdivide by filing a covenant...
Right.
...on the deed.
And that's part, that was written into the variance, and that's going to happen.
Correct. That was part of the original variance.
Right.
And the part of the original decision. So therefore, they chose not to. I don't know what these new owners are going to do, or if these people are going to, when they sell one day, the new owner, because there's no landmark on the guest house, because they said that they wanted to keep it as a historic building, there's no landmark on it, they could knock it down. They could go before, you know, they could subdivide anyway someday.
They can't subdivide it. It's covenant.
If it's covenant.
It's over. It's done. It's over.
If it's done, it hasn't been filed yet.
It will not be subdivided.
Hasn't been filed yet. When it's finally filed.
It's part of the original variance.
It's part of the decision for the variance.
In order to get a CO on the guest house.
Correct.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that fully.
And as far as the access to Fordham Road, they have access to Fordham Road. They're entitled to access to Fordham Road.
Right, they have two front yards.
Correct. They have a parking pad. That's what was decided.
Parking pad, now they have a garage. They won't be using the parking pad, maybe, but they'll use the garage.
And they're saying they're going to be using the garage for pool equipment. Well, that's what sheds are for.
No, the pool equipment is going underneath the...
Or pool furniture.
Pool furniture can go inside the garage.
So what?
Well, the point is, you just said that the cars were going to go in the garage. Now you're saying it doesn't matter that...
We'll have cars and pool furniture in my garage.
Okay, and regarding the survey that they submitted to you, I did not get a chance to see that. They also talked about another property with a through driveway. That is a, that's pre-existing. The garage is actually for, excuse me, for the main structure, for the main house, for the main residence. This, again, is a garage not for the main residence, it seems.
Well, we brought that up. One of the things that Dan mentioned is that why, the pool is so far away, and the garage is as well.
Right.
He's saying that, you know, the kids might want to use the back access for the bikes. You know, it's a reasonable request. You know, do I like the fact that they're coming back for a variance after a variance? No, I don't. You know, these are the things that we have to weigh.
Okay, well, if you're considering putting a garage onto Fordham Road, then why not just have the access to that garage from Halsey Street, you know?
And not with it up?
Yeah, so, and not use Fordham Road. Again, you have all the letters on file.
They're entitled to use Fordham Road. You keep going back to that. They're entitled to use Fordham Road.
I understand that.
They don't need a variance to drive in and out of Fordham Road.
Right.
It's the same as any other house that's on Fordham Road. They can drive in and out of there all they want.
They have rights.
Yes, I understand that.
They have furniture on Fordham Road.
I understand that.
Like you.
I understand. Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
And regarding the ARB, no opinion was offered by the ARB, just to make that clear.
No opinion was offered by the ARB for the placement of the garage where it stands on the survey now?
For the proposed garage.
Right.
Correct. And no opinion was offered because they knew that they, that the applicant had to come before the ZBA first.
Okay.
And that is on file.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to ask about the landscaping. Landscaping was always a concern for us. There was an original landscaping plan that has been approved by both the ARB and the ZBA. I understand that the building department is in charge of fulfilling that...
Enforcing it.
Enforcing it. I see no new landscaping plan per se. There have been a couple filed through the building department, and they're not all the same, so I don't know what's what in the end. You know, there was one filed back in September, and it looks like, you know, they were splitting the property in half. There was another one that was filed, you know, previously when the proposed garage for the original application. So, you know, it's very difficult to have to speak with you in terms of, you know, you were addressing the original applicant, and the original applicant, I must say, in quotes, you know, "They didn't want the mother-in-law schlepping her luggage from one end of the property to the other," and therefore, they decided to put the guest house where it was. And that was the argument back then. Now, the argument has changed because they have a right off of Fordham Road, because they have a guest house on Fordham Road, that they should also be entitled to having a garage on Fordham Road. So I'd like...
They don't have the right to Fordham Road because of the guest house. They have the right to Fordham Road because they are a through property with two front yards.
Yes.
Nothing to do with the guest house.
Right.
Or the garage.
Okay.
They could drive in and out of Fordham Road from now till doomsday.
They have rights. They do have rights on Fordham Road.
Right, I understand, because they have two front yards.
Right.
So the question is whether or not you are going to consider another variance, another new variance, for the applicant. And regarding the landscaping, are we, how, where do we stand with that?
Something for John Foster to address, right?
If the ARB kitchen, the landscaping is part of their approval, that would be an ARB matter. We don't usually get into, Zoni Boy doesn't ordinarily get into landscaping for, you know, an accessory garage.
All right, well, it was something that we discussed with the previous decision.
There's nothing in the prior decision about any landscaping condition.
Right, but verbally, there was, and it was put on record.
There was nothing in the prior decision about a landscaping condition.
Right, not in the written decision, correct. But it's something that we had asked for from the beginning, and we hope that that is the case from here on out as well, that we, that because it was, this has nothing to do with the garage. It had to do with the guest house, that our property would be shielded from the guest house. Now that they, you know, you're considering a garage there, we want to doubly make sure that that is shielded from the property as well.
Do you have a hedge on your property?
We have some private now, which we plan on taking down, and that's it. So, no, there isn't enough.
Well, they're planning calls for a stockade fence and five-foot abreviate along a property line. Is that, is that part of this app? That's written here? Is that what you...
Yeah, and we're going to go back to the ARB. Whatever, and we've discussed this over and over again, we're willing to work with...
But that's what it says, so minimally, that's what you're doing anyway.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. They're always playing for a buffer.
If they want nine-foot ones, you'll change what they say, but already, the defense and screening. I have a question. If they left that garage up by the main house, and they wanted to have a driveway from Fordham Road all the way up to the main house, they could do that as a right, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's...
Be careful what you're fighting for.
I'm sorry, I didn't, so you're saying that if there's a...
They originally had an approval with a garage up here.
Yes.
If they wanted to use this driveway, not have a parking lot right here, they could have this driveway run all the way up to the garage. So it turns out that, it's semantics. It turns out, you know...
Okay, well, if that's the case, that's fine, too. Then I won't have a garage sitting right on top of me either. So if you're, I would much prefer that be the case.
It is screened. They certainly want screening just as much as you do.
I'm sure they would.
You know, and it's not really...
And again, they gave up a lot.
They gave up an awful lot.
They gave up an awful lot to get this. And you could be looking at a house, and a garage, and a driveway that's much bigger than what exists now.
If they, yeah, if they chose to go before the planning board and have the property subdivided, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, which would have happened.
But the original owner said from the beginning, that's not what he wanted to do, and therefore, the covenant would come into play.
And these owners, they can't do it. If they want to do it, they can't do it.
My thought on this is that in the beginning of this conversation this evening, you were concerned about having two cars in the garage, three in the driveway, et cetera, et cetera. And then now, and then now it's like, well, so if they do, they do.
Well, that would be an extreme case if they put two cars in the garage and put three cars on the patio.
But that's why I asked the question about, because if they left that garage right where they want it, could they put the driveway in off of Fordham Road, they'd park the cars there anyway? So it turns out to be a moot point, because then you've got all this driveway.
Okay.
The people on Halsey Street, living on Halsey Street, they're really living on Halsey Street. They're not living on Fordham Road. And they're parking their cars now, or they're going to continue to park their cars, on Halsey Street. They have a big driveway there, circle driveway and a driveway around the house. That's where they park now.
And the impact from a garage, nobody lives in it, and there's no bathrooms in it, there's no bedrooms in it. It's just, it's a building that stuff gets stored inside of. So as far as noise and impact to you...
As opposed to a house.
Another house with another swimming pool and another garage.
Well, that was taken off the table.
Right, it's not on the table, so...
Well, that's going to be taken under consideration. They gave up a lot. You have to realize that, a lot.
And this board, I think, gave up a lot in approving the very first decision as well, you know?
They gave up very little.
Well, there was a lot to consider. You have letters. Please read all the letters.
We read all the letters.
Yeah, we have.
Well, if you could...
We're all aware of that. We know what the neighbors think.
Okay.
But we have to also weigh that against the rights of the property owner.
I understand that.
It's a balancing test. It always is.
I understand that. All right, well, having another building on Fordham Road, garage being a building, is, does have impact on Fordham Road. And if you compare it, as Anthony did, with the other structures on Fordham Road, the other residences, those are all main residences, not accessory structures. They're main residences that have garages to them.
Well, so now he's going to have a garage.
And your point being?
My point being is that, you know, the garages really go to main structures, to the main building of a house.
You've made all those arguments.
I know, that's what, I know. I feel like I'm being...
We get the point.
All right, so basically, you know, we're concerned on Fordham Road, and we would like our landscaping.
I have a question. If you put the garage there, and you put that parking space there, I don't necessarily want to see it turned into a sports court.
Exactly, sports court.
I mean, would you put a stipulation, no basketball?
Yeah, we would. Dan, the whole real purpose is to have that play area for the children behind the house.
Right.
That's all, that's all.
Why don't you put a gravel driveway? Excuse me? Gravel driveway, no asphalt.
Yeah, that's fine, too. But I'm saying, right now, you could pave it and put in a sports court.
You could put a hoop up there, yeah.
Yeah, which could be noisy.
Right.
Lights on there, you know.
That is definitely not the plan if you want to put that limitation on it, Dan. That's not going to be a problem.
You don't, then I...
I mean, I'll speak to the client, but I really, I can't see it. That's not, that's not the intention. Just two things I just wanted to point out. One is, what I just want to remind everybody is, this lot's on Fordham Road, too, just like her lot. She and her neighbors have driveways on Fordham because they live on Fordham, so does my client. So we're not, and by the way, we're not asking you for relief from the setback. So, I mean, obviously, the reasonable village standard, you believe that a 50-foot setback is reasonable for a structure, so we're complying with that. That's it. Thank you, folks.
Anybody else want to be heard? All right, you want to hold this for decision?
Yes.
I move that we hold this for decision.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night. Oh, yeah. 2799 GWB Southampton LLC 132 McGee Street. Have no runes, huh?
No, not yet. Still leather, right?
I think I did see something in there, yeah.
Have a headache, James?
I have a headache.
November 21st, minutes.
Don't exist, something. You see anything, Rick, from them?
Pardon?
Did you see anything from...
George Benedict.
George Benedict?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was looking at my notes on something.
All from Rooney?
Yeah, Rooney called today, the applicant's attorney, to see if there was any reason for him to come here tonight. And I told him, "No, you know, we had concluded the public hearing last month, and they had said they wanted, they were going to do a coordinated SECA review." So I told him, "All we need to do is, tonight is to start that process."
Okay.
So we could actually close the public hearing, subject to completion of SECA review, and ask that the planning board be the lead agency for SECA review.
All right.
I would make that motion.
You got a second?
Second.
Want to say that?
Aye.
So that goes over to the planning board. On the matter of 2801, number 7, James Street LLC, and we have a letter from Eric Bregman. You have a copy of that letter?
Yes. In fact, I had copies for all of you.
In other words, things seem to be settled.
Yes, in fact, do you all have copies? But does I have copies in the site plans? If you don't?
Yeah, I, we have copies.
Okay, and then I have new ser...
Because I do, anyway. Do you want some stuff, guys?
Does everybody have copies? I have all copies here.
All right, we'll take a copy.
Okay. Here, Rick.
December 17th, I have that.
Yes, oh, okay. Does anybody need...
I just have it.
Okay. I have surveys, though. All over by surveys. Here's Rick. If you pass for Jim and you, since I was here last, we took all of the board's members' comments, as well as Mr. Bregman's comments, and basically worked together. And the survey reflects the revisions, and we incorporated quite a few of the board members' comments. One, it was indicated, why could we not push back the proposed poolhouse swimming pool to the minimum setback of 20 feet from the side yard, which the designer said, yes, that could be done. I believe that it was the chair who had said, "Well, why can't you also not have the garage doors face the James Street?" And that was also incorporated. There was a question regarding the cupola. Mr. Brady says that he has put cupolas on all of his accessory structures, and that to date, the building department has treated that like a chimney, et cetera, and that this is not the first time he's done it, and there's never been any issue as the fact that that violates the height limitation. I believe that was one of the questions of Mr. DeVini. Mr. Guziewicz was not here at the last hearing, so since it was not a very complicated facts situation, I'd just like to run through it. We have a pre-existing house here that is not conforming with respect to front yard on James Street, as well as not conforming as to rear yard, because it's only located 31 feet from Mr. Vradian's property. What's being proposed is that the house and all the other structures be removed, and the house is put back into a conforming location with a brand-new septic system and water system, and a detached garage. The submission that we made, the code actually encourages detached garages. If we brought this and attached it, it would maintain the non-conformity as far as the rear yard. In this respect, the only non-conformity that would remain, although it's being decreased, is the front yard setback for the proposed garage at 30, now at 38.1 feet. Basically, we also are, if you look at the site plan, proposing screening all along James Street. This is a two-front yard situation. It's a very long front yard on James Street. None of the neighbors reflect off of James Street have submitted any opposition, and the three neighbors that have come forth actually all approved this plan, and not that they're definitive, but certainly, their concerns have been addressed, and the letter clearly says they actually support this proposal. I submit to you that there is practical difficulty here. If you look at the proposed water service connection, if you pull it back to 50 feet, water service connection, if you pull it back to 50 feet, one, we can't do a side entrance. That's what the design, Mr. Brady says. Then it would be, the doors would have to face James Street. And I know that that was a concern of Mr. Devini, and I think that Mr. Gutterer, you had said, you know, that it's not always the best thing to have the double garage doors facing the street. Mr. Vradian and his neighbors also didn't care for that either. Moreover, he wanted the distance to be maximized, even though it was a conforming setback as far as a garage at 20 feet. He preferred that it be set back further away from him, and have the entrance come in off the side. They also, even though they were talking about open front yards, if you recall, they wanted screening. So, if you look at the proposed site plan, there is extensive screening being proposed along James Street, and at the height of 16 feet, even with the cupola, now with the doors facing sideways and the stretch being screened, you will not be able to see this practically at all, because there's already 20-foot arrebaty on the adjoining property owner's side. I submit to you that, under the circumstances, because of the two front yards, the very limited rear yard, and the, basically, removal of substantial non-conformities that, as you suggested, Mr. Gutterer, we pulled it back almost in line with the house at 40 feet. If we attached it, this would be a conforming setback.
Back to 37 feet, right?
It's 38.1, actually. So, we're off by one point.
Can I interrupt you right there?
Yes.
Because the Eric Bregman's letter and the site plan-
Did he, did it not-
Say 38.1, 38 feet 1 inch.
Says 37.2.
The survey that you just handed in-
You know what? I just picked these up, and this afternoon. Um, you're absolutely correct. I picked this up this afternoon, and I actually sent him the site plan. I should have looked at it before I opened it up. I apologize. It is supposed to be at 38.1.
So, it will be at 38.1?
It will be at 38.1, you know.
Some other foot back, okay.
I had emailed this PDF to squires and asked them to reflect it. I picked them up this afternoon. I apologize. You're right. It says here 37. It's not going to be a 37.2. It's going to be 38.1.
Okay.
And I will, if you would like, I will submit corrected. You know what? I rushed them, and I can't imagine why they put this at this distance. As you can see, the, I mean, this is what I actually sent to squires yesterday afternoon, but I did sort of rush them and picked them up today. And I should have opened it. I just assumed they did. That teaches, but yes, it's going to be at 38.1, which is 1.9 feet off the house, but they're trying to keep the water connection. If you see on the, on the survey, they said that it would sort of, the water connection that's coming from the house to the poolhouse, they would be logistical issues if there was a pullback on that as well. So, those are the other practical difficulties. I submit to you that it's de minimis at this juncture, considering that substantially a lot of the non-conform, in fact, all of the non-conformities, other than this accessory structure setback at 38.1 from the front yard, is being removed. On the balancing test, that certainly the benefit to the applicant outweighs any potential detriment to the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, environmental conditions, et cetera. And I would respectfully request that the board seriously consider granting the variance requested.
Do you have any questions?
I'm good.
No.
Jerry?
No. Rick?
No questions?
Everybody out in the audience, ladies and gentlemen, heard of this application?
We could adjourn it for decision, subject to submission of a revised survey.
I'll get it to you before the, your work session. Thank you.
I move that we adjourn this for decision.
Subject to submission of the revised survey.
Yeah, subject to-
What he said.
What he said.
Second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Case number 2803, Neil Joffe, 50 David Weiss Lane.
Evening to the applicant Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 Southampton Street, Southampton. This is a continuing application from last month, and I believe that there was one substantive issue that we were asked to address, namely, the right of the owner to install a, this patio on the west side of his unit facing the car dealership. And on December 12th, I submitted a letter with some attachments. I hope you have that letter.
Mm-hmm.
Among other things, it contains relevant portions of the offering plan from the Polo Club condominium, which talks about irrevocably restricted, limited common elements which are designed, even though they're part of the common elements of the condominium, they are designed for the exclusive use of the units that directly abut them. The site of the subject patio is one of those, those particular areas, and there's also a provision in the offering plan which says that if an owner decides to construct something within that area, and patio was specifically mentioned, as indicated in the materials I submitted, same requires the acknowledgement or the approval of the board of managers. Now, I also submitted, as part of that packet, a letter from the board of managers, signed by one of the original managers, indicating that they acknowledged that, and that they recognized that we're even approaching the board to request permission to keep it there. So, I think as far as the right-
They had no objection.
They had no objection. No, that's right. You have a letter from them that says that. And I don't know if you need it, but if there's any question of their authority, I can tell you that Brian Farrell, who signed the letter, is one of the original managers set forth in the offering plan. So, he's definitely authorized to do that. I also spoke to the attorney for Farrell, which still controls the condominium, and she confirmed that as well. So, there's no question about the fact that, number one, this is a restricted area, even though it's part of the common elements, it's restricted to this particular unit. And in fact, when this unit was designed, there were actually patio doors facing the west. There must have been some contemplation at some point that there would be an access there. And it bears repeating that, as I mentioned at the initial hearing, even though this area is encumbered by a buffer, this is the only unit in the entire development that has a restricted area that fronts on the buffer. So, if you were to grant this relief, there would not be another applicant within that development who could seek the same relief. So, this is truly a unique situation. There was something else that was mentioned at the initial hearing, that my client had installed a hot tub on the existing patio in the south of that building. That hot tub's been removed. I actually went there myself today and noted the fact that it's gone, and my client had told me he'd removed it. So, I think that, given the circumstances, and given the fact that we're talking not about a zoning setback, but we're talking about an encroachment of an at-grade patio into a transitional yard which buffers this use from the backyard of a car dealership and a repair facility, I would think that when you do the balancing test, it comes out the right way as far as the applicant's concerned. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But I think I've addressed one other thing I'll mention. Someone had asked about the timing of making of the application, and in my letter, I did set forth a timeline as to what, how the thing evolved, and the fact that my client, once he was made aware of it, did take the necessary steps to address the concern. Thank you.
Rick?
No questions.
Now, you have something that's new compared to last month? You won't repeat what you just said last month, right?
Pardon?
You won't repeat old stuff. You have something new.
No, I have something new. I have something to pass out. The question, oh, my name is Susan Sherry Clark. I live at 393 Hampton Road, directly adjacent to the east. The question I raised at your regular meeting on November 21st, 2013, and you can refer to the minutes, is not just if the applicant, Mr. Joffe, could use the property in the common area to the west of his unit A2 to build a patio, but whether he actually owned it. I believe that the owner of this parcel of property should be the applicant for this variance request. The tax records for the Village of Southampton and the Suffolk County Clerk indicate the tax map number for the parcel of land for the common area of units A1 and A2 is 904-10-124.9, and that's, there are attachments. You can see that I've included those. And Suffolk County lists the owner of that parcel as Kidd Construction Company Incorporated, not Mr. Joffe, and you can see the attached documents. The tax number for the common area of A1 and A2 is different from Mr. Joffe's unit A2, which is 904-10-3-2. And note that the tax number ends in 24.6 that's listed on the application is incorrect. That was the number that was assigned to that entire lot. It was a three-lot subdivision. That was the number that was assigned to the whole entire lot, and I assume it's been retired. So, that is an incorrect tax map number that's listed on the application. According to the sections of the documents submitted at the building department by the applicant's attorney on December 12th, 2013, the condominium offering plan declaration with the covenants and restrictions I-18C states that, "No homeowner shall make any structural addition, alteration, or improvement of either a temporary or permanent nature in or to their home, or any limited common element, without prior written approval of the board of managers. If written approval was requested and received as stated above before the patio was installed on April 30th, 2013, it's not in the file. Because of the 2011 ZBA variance request by the owner developer to build in the mandatory buffer zone transitional yard, the board of managers of the Polo Club should have been well aware of the covenant and advise Mr. Joffe how to proceed before any building commenced. In addition, if the workers stopped when directed by the building inspector on April 30th, 2013, the patio would not have been completed, and the cost to remove minimal." The application was not properly noticed, which I did mention before, the tax number being incorrect. In addition to the condo owners within that 200 feet were not on the list to be set notices. And when I checked in the building department, they said, there's a glitch, that for some reason that they don't know, the condo owners haven't been getting notices. But I know that happened, it happened in 2011, so I assume it's been an ongoing problem. And I mean, I see that for the other boards being a problem, because if it's happening with the ZBA, it must be happening with the planning board and the ARB, and that's a lot of people not getting notices, particularly with this particular condo right across the street, Canterbury Muse, and to the east is the Colony. So, those people were not, one person in Canterbury Muse got it, but not the others. In addition, it's on the second page of my letter, it appears that the purported hardship was self-curated and could have been averted if the proper procedures, as established in the declaration, were followed. So, if he had gotten, written a permission ahead of time, he might have known. But most importantly, because Mr. Joffe does not, and I left that word out, but added it, even own the land on which he had the patio built, I believe that this variance request should be denied. I urge the board, if this variance request for a patio is to proceed, that it be re-noticed properly with a correct name of the owner-applicant and a correct tax map number. In addition, that mailed notification letter should be sent to all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property, including area condo owners, as required by Southampton Village Code 11625B4. And I guess you mentioned the piggyback thing. I guess, to me, that's it. This, the last time when the applicant at that time came for a variance, it was for a patio, for a pool. And if they had wanted the patio variance for this, they should have gone at the same time. But if not, they came back. It's actually been going on for years. It's just like one more and one more. So, it's a sort of a piggyback thing. And I also, if the board of managers did give him written permission to proceed with this, possibly they're the ones that might reimburse him for any expenses incurred, because he should have been told what the process was. And just a small thing, it mentions sliding glass doors. There are no sliding glass doors in that condo unit. I mean, it's a small thing. I'm not sure who, why anybody would write that if they did exist. They're French doors. And actually, there were French doors put in it with patios in 2006, then they were taken out and made French windows with landscaping, but somehow the doors appeared. But I can show you that plan, but I don't think it's necessary. But that's just a small point. But my point is, according to the tax map number, particularly the one that you see with the handwritten numbers, it said, you know, the 50, that was from a planning board file, and it was my understanding that the person was, I got it a number of years ago and found it. I try to keep my files straight. But I was told that was from the Southampton Village Tax Assessor, that that, those were the numbers that were assigned. So, and you can see there's a common area, which is separate from A1 and A2. So, I, according to all the things I find, Mr. Joffe doesn't own that particular piece of land.
Anything else, Bill?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to respond to those things. I never said that Mr. Joffe owned that property. The reason I submitted, what I submitted was to indicate that certain of the unit owners under the condominium offering plan and the declaration have areas adjacent to them which they don't own, which they have an unrestricted right to use. And that's exactly what we have here. That's exactly what we had approval for. The question you should ask yourself, and it was a concern, the thing was built, what would happen if you walked in and it hadn't been built, and we said we wanted to build it there, and we had the letter from the board of managers? What you really have to look at is what the end result is. And I think in this case, we've met all the tests. We've shown we have a right to have the patio there. The board of managers has consented to it. You may remember that we had an application two or three years ago, when the original developer requested variances to have patios located on the Hampton roadside. Those variances were all granted. I don't see that there's any question of standing on this. If there weren't an irrevocable or unrestricted common area, I'm sorry, if there weren't a, I can't phrase it right. In other words, we have the absolute right exclusively to use the area adjacent to the unit, even though it's part of the common area. That's part of the plan. And it's specifically authorized in the, by the plainest terms you can possibly get in that condominium declaration. So, I think that that argument just doesn't hold water. Second of all, I find it somewhat confusing to see how this construction directly affects this objectant. As I recall, she is located on the east side of this property. There's a building, there are several buildings between her and this property. She can't even see it. The only person who's in any way affected by this is the parking lot of a car dealership. Now, I defy you to do the balancing test and see how this would possibly hurt the car dealership. And as far as notice is concerned, as you know, the procedure in the village is for the village building office to provide the list of people to whom notice is to be given. That's what we all do. That's what we did in this case. And in any event, Ms. Sherry Clark is obviously here, so she had some kind of notice of it. So, I failed to see that as being a valid objection. And all of the above having been said, I would ask that you close the hearing and render a decision at your next meeting.
Rick?
To me, the point is, even if it's okay with the rest of the condo that he built it, if he doesn't own it, that the applicant would be the owner of the property. The person who owned it would need to be the person. Whatever they do internally is different than whatever process that would be going for a board. So, the owner should be the person applying for it. I guess if I wanted to apply to, you know, build on the village right away, and someone said, go ahead, you know, I couldn't do that and come to you. Well, I could do it, but I couldn't come to you for variance to do it.
You're addressing a legal issue, which you obviously have no comprehension of the legal situation. The question is whether the applicant has standing to make the application. If the applicant has the right to use that portion of the property, he has standing to make the application, and the condominium documents indicate that he does have the right to use. It's a legal issue. I don't believe that you're an attorney.
Well, I'm sure I'm not. I would never purport it to be, never. I can't afford an attorney. I do this on my own.
The board will consider it when they render a decision.
Anybody else on the board? Anything, anything else from you, Rick?
No.
Want to hold this for decision?
Yes, yes.
I move that we hold this for, case for decision.
Second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Moving us up to the one new case. Case number 2806, Eugene L., 37 Osborne Avenue.
Good evening. My name's Gene Ashburn. I'm the owner of the property. I've been the owner since 1981. The house was constructed around 1925, which is probably the reason why it doesn't meet the 25-foot front yard setback. When I applied for the variance, I applied for an area of 30, roughly 30 square feet, that would be within a pre-existing non-conforming. The front porch of the house, which we want to continue in the same style and structure to the south side of the property, to meet with, in addition to the house, of a sun, sun room and second floor addition, the port- and second-floor addition, the porch would meet up with that addition. When I received the letter to be sent out to the neighbors, for some reason, it came out as a 182-square-foot variance request.
Just one minute. Do we have the posting letters?
Yes, I have one around here.
The receipts.
Oh, the posting.
Yeah.
This is what I sent out to the neighbors.
We just need the receipts back. You have the receipts there, right?
Yes, I have all of these.
Mailings. We have to put that in the file.
The receipt and the, I assume you want the affidavit as well?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you have any questions as to?
All right. So the part of the porch that faces south does not need a variance? It's only the little corner?
No, it doesn't. Just the 30-square-foot area of that porch extension.
In other words, that's the corner where it meets the front porch that faces Osborne Avenue?
Yes.
And that's the only part that needs a variance?
Yes.
And there isn't anything else that you have here that's going on that needs a variance?
No, that is the only.
Has some new construction going, and it's all legit?
I haven't filed with the ARB because it requires, you know, a decision on your part as to, you know, the 30 square feet, which are on the plans, which I will be submitting, you know, pending your decision.
It's open porch, correct?
It's an open porch. It will remain an open porch. The structure is going to be identical to the existing porch. We're just continuing it around to the south side of the building.
It's only the little corner that needs.
Yeah. 20, 30 square feet.
This part here needs nothing.
Yep.
Man?
Nope.
Man?
Nope.
Jerry?
No questions.
Anybody out in the audience who hasn't heard of this application?
Sure.
I do have a question of the Board that the Building Department was not able to clarify as to, the existing porch needs some repair. Over the years, it's settled, and the contractor wants to stabilize the porch. Originally, it was on locust posts, which of course have, you know, deteriorated, and the porch has sagged. He warned me that once they get into the structure, they don't know what they're going to find.
They might find some rot.
And if they find rot, if it has to be replaced, because it's pre-existing non-conforming, am I going to lose that exemption if the porch has to be completely replaced? If they find rot in there that?
Just make sure the Building Department knows what you're doing.
Well, I told them what I was doing, but they couldn't answer this question as to.
You'd probably hold the roof up and then just take the floorboards and the floor.
The floor most likely will be replaced, but they don't know what they're going to find when they get into the roof. If that's rotten, whether, if that has to be replaced, whether that's going to be an issue of me losing.
But it would still be replaced in kind.
In kind, right.
It's going to be replaced in kind.
Absolutely. There's no change to the style.
You're not going to go out 10 feet toward the street or anything like that. You're going to replace what's there.
Right.
It's a repair. If it's rotten, it's rotten. It's been there since 1925, you know?
Right.
Who knows what's in there?
Well, that's what I needed from, you know, clarification from you so that I don't wind up demolishing something that I now can't replace with new.
Would you replace?
Excuse me?
Would you replace?
We haven't replaced anything yet.
Correct.
As long as you don't increase the degree of non-conformity, you're okay.
No.
And as long as you get a building permit for what you're going to do.
Yeah, that's on.
If during the course.
The building permit will include, you know.
If during the course of construction, you find that you need to do more than you're hoping to have to do, you stop and notify the Building Department, and you should be fine.
Okay. That's all they wanted to know, because I was in there Monday to find out, because I wanted to be sure I didn't lose my, you know, exemption of, you know, the fact that it is, you know, non-conforming now.
Okay.
Okay. This is an application for a front yard variance to 21.2 feet in order to permit a proposed covered front porch extension to the existing dwelling, period. Such covered porch extension will be no closer to the street than the existing covered front porch, period. Under these circumstances, we find that the requested variance is minimal and will not have any adverse impact on the neighborhood, period. Therefore, we grant the requested variance.
I make this motion as.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
This meeting of the Southampton Village, as only would it appear, is closed.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.